Going to call the November twentieth City Council meeting. Order to answer.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Lydah?
Here.
Dr. Littlebrook?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
And let us pray. Lord, we lift up our hearts in gratitude and thanksgiving for our council's blessing. Help us to be mindful of the gifts that we take for granted. For the gift of life, for the gift of faith, for our daily bread, for shelter, for the life-giving love of family and friends. We are grateful for your presence here today and your promise to be with us always. In your name we pray, amen.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Yeah, but it's the wish of the council. I'm open for a motion over there.
President, I move for approval of the matter about reading.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nays, the ayes have it. As we get into the report section, one thing I would like to say is our next work session on November thirtieth, we're going to start at four o'clock rather than five. It's five o'clock. We have a Christmas tree lighting. Santa's going to be here. We're ready. Begging, Santa's going to be here. And I think Mr. Shaw's going to lead the council into Ontario, Arizona, Minnesota. So. With that, we're going to start off. The Hoover Softball Association has a presentation to make if you'd like to come now.
Mr. President, council, thank you very much for allowing us to come in and make this presentation of Down Syndrome. My name is John Parker. I'm park president for Hoover Softball Association. My left is Roger Williams. He's a board member and a White Lightning coach with his daughters and players, Sophia and Bella. In the middle, we have Sue Toth, director of Down Syndrome Alabama, and the Harvey family, along with Jessica, one of our softball players at Hoover Softball. Hoover Softball Association is a local rec softball program, along with our in-house travel ball organization called the White Lightning. Four or five years ago, one of our missions was to select a community service organization to help bring awareness and raise some money for it. Our board selected and decided Down Syndrome Alabama was the organization we wanted to partner with for one purpose, and that purpose is Jessica. Jessica is a ball player. She's an awesome ball player, and she's a big-time inspiration to every other ball player and family out there. Two times a year, we host, White Lightning hosts a travel ball tournament to raise some money. And also, at the end of the fall season, fall ball season 2017, our whole day is dedicated to Down Syndrome. Our families compete to raise money. Our players compete to raise money. And our teams compete to raise money. The winner gets an ice cream party. There's a lot of money raised for ice cream. All money raised in the concession stand goes to Down Syndrome. We have an amazing park. We have an amazing parks and rec department that support us, and we have amazing families. To date, we've been doing this for four or five years. We've raised in excess of $20,000. And tonight, Hoover Softball Association, with the help of Sophia and Bella Rogers, Williams, would like to present a check in the amount of $5,200 to Down Syndrome Alabama I also want to thank the director of Down Syndrome, Sue Toth, for allowing us to support them, and it's an honor and a privilege. Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you.[354.78][354.78](Applause). Kyle.
Here you are.
This is Phil Minor, he's a board member as well for Hoover Softball.
(Inaudible). 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 Congratulations.[364.11][364.11](Applause).
Mr. Murphy, you were the one that initiated this celebration. Why don't you handle the next introduction? If you want to go down with the mayor to stand for the part of the...
Well, we are very happy tonight to have back home Ms. Rihanna Kenzie. She is a 2011 graduate of Hoover High School. She's 2012 Miss Hoover. She's 2015 graduate of the University of Alabama. In 2017, she was named Miss District of Columbia, and she was third runner-up in Miss America. So, we're so grateful. We, you know, we talk about our young folks, we talk about our school system, and how we're proud of everything that comes out of our school system, and how they work hard and do a great job. Rihanna's stand-up voice is just there. Well, and we're just so grateful to see one of our young folks come through our system and to achieve, everything that you achieve is just outstanding. We're so proud of you, and we're so grateful that you have come back to Hoover, Alabama. And I know your mom and dad are here, Bella and Robert Kenzie, y'all with stand-up. We have a lot of other relatives here as well. And I know that y'all are so proud of you, and you should be. We are grateful that we're going to have this opportunity to read a little something we just want to say about you tonight. Do you mind standing there and just taking all these accolades?[501.31][501.31](Laughter). Well, how's the Murphy, what do you perceive with the audience?
Yes, sir. Whereas Miss Rihanna Kenzie, daughter of Robert and Bella Kenzie, Hoover native and a Hoover High School graduate, has competed and won multiple pageants beginning in 2008, when she won her first title as Miss Jefferson County Outstanding Teen, whereas, and some additional titles won by Miss Kenzie, including Miss Birmingham 2012, we're proud of Miss Hoover in 2012, and Miss Marble Valley in 2013, Miss North Jefferson Area in 2014, and Miss Lee's Area in 2015. And whereas, Miss Kenzie graduated from Hoover High School in 2011 and University of Alabama in 2015, where she majored in Biology and pre-med studies. And whereas, Miss Kenzie education and goals support her pageant platform that has always been informed and educated about diabetes and raised funds to fight the disease. And whereas, in June 2017, Miss Kenzie was crowned Miss District of Columbia, and also won the Miss American Community Service Award for her work with daring to defeat diabetes nonprofit organizations he founded. And whereas, in September 2017, Miss Kenzie competed in the Miss America Pageant and Miss District of Columbia. Whereas, Miss Kenzie won third runner-up in the Miss America Pageant, receiving a $15,000 scholarship and a separate $5,000 Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math scholarship. Now, therefore, I, Frank B. Pocato, Mayor of the City of Hoover, on behalf of the Hoover City Council and the citizens of Hoover, hereby congratulate Miss Rihanna Kenzie on her outstanding achievement and wish her continued success as she pursues medical school and her career in pediatric endocrinology. Presented this on twentieth day of November of 2017.[615.29][615.29](Applause).
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
We would like to invite everyone to the library downstairs in the theater access area, where we're going to be holding a reception for Rihanna right after this hopefully very, very short council meeting. Hopefully. Mr. Mayor, presentation to community service organizations.
Yes, and you know, I think the city of Hoover is very generous in providing funds each year to many, many organizations. And each year, you know, we distribute these, it's several hundred thousand dollars that go out into the Hoover metropolitan area. And we present it in different ways. Some just come by for the check. We asked each of the organizations this year, how do you want to give the check? And they said, we'd like to come by the council meeting. So, we're going to invite them, those that can and that are here, to come up, so we can all get a picture with them and present their checks as well. So, the Alabama Symphonic Association, come on down. Lori, make sure I hear this a lot, folks.[795.92][795.92](Laughter). Please. I think this is Alabama Symphony. Eighteen ministries? Eighteen? Here we go. Birmingham Museum of Art? Eleven. Birmingham Zoo? We had lunch together the other day, first time I've met. Right. Let's see, the best room cut off at Clay House Children's. That was, split up there. Crime stalkers. Here's the crime scene. Ben, okay. Hoover Health. All right, since you gave me the check, you can't talk enough.[890.22][890.22](Laughter). Hell shaking. Bills on the wheels. Yep. And special equestrian. Okay. So, let's see, I think, is that everyone? Did I miss anybody? Who am I missing?
Show me me.
Okay, we've got, we just don't have, we do have yours, we just don't have his.
We have that issue before.
Okay, good.[920.01][920.01](Laughter). All right, well...
Is that everybody? Yeah, the smaller people could come get in.[926.13][926.13](Laughter). Smaller. Smaller. I learned. I'm like sure. I can't see you. Let's put the mayor here in the middle. But we got to get you right here in the middle. Let's put him in the center of the table right here. If everybody can kind of turn, like, turn, like, please. I can see this way. That I can. Can you back up just a little? Can you back up? Are you coming out? No, hi. And then you draft it back. May I come out? Come on, man. Let's have a hug. (Inaudible). All right, big smile, you have your money. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. (Inaudible). Dr. Littlebrook, I believe you have an appointment in the library.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Hal Humphrey to the library board.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it.
I was a... I'll have to stand for that.
Mr. Murphy is abstaining.
I don't like what you're saying.
There's a joke there somewhere. Is Mr. Humphrey here?
Yeah, I always thank you for the point, and most importantly, for your support to the public library and making it the best in the state, for council, and the mayor who supports us all the time in our growth and everything. I'm speaking for everybody else in the county, y'all.
Thank you, Senator. Resolution fifty-seven thirty-nine seventeen, Mr. Corley.
Invitations to bid for traffic signal and roadway lighting services, bid number seventeen dash zero three seven, were sent to twenty-three vendors listed on the city vendor list. Bids were opened on Wednesday, November eighth, 2017. One bid was received from Stoneham Sons Electrical Contractors Inc. in the amount of fifty-seven thousand two hundred nineteen dollars. This resolution rejects this bid and authorizes the mayor to negotiate with this bidder for the services to be performed at a price not to exceed their quoted bid amount to execute a contract for the bidder for the work to be performed.
Motion to approve Resolution fifty-seven thirty-nine seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? This is a motion to authorize the mayor to negotiate, hopefully, a better rate not to exceed that of the... Anything from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven forty seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank B. Pocato to execute documents granting of distribution facilities he sent to Alabama Power for the installation of the new underground service that are in Spark.
Motion to approve Resolution fifty-seven forty seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? This is a motion to authorize the mayor to negotiate, hopefully, a better rate not to exceed that of the... Anything from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven forty seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank B. Pocato to execute documents granting of distribution facilities he sent to Alabama Power for the installation of the new underground service that are in Spark.
Motion to approve Resolution fifty-seven forty seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? This is planned Thursday night to provide utilities at new restaurants over by the volleyball pit, I believe. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven forty-one seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank B. Pocato to execute amendment to wastewater system management operations and maintenance services contract for clear water solutions.
Motion to approve Resolution fifty-seven forty-one seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President, I'd be, I have a question. During the presentation Thursday night about the stormwater facilities that we have, one question that none of us failed to, or all of us failed to ask, was the possibility of getting out of that business altogether and selling those plants. I don't know if that's something that's doable or not, but should that occur, is there a cause to get us out of this?
And the comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven forty-two seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank B. Pocato to execute a scope of services proposal with C, L, X.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution fifty-seven forty-two seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? This is a new service that will allow citizens opportunities in the future to better communicate with the city regarding concerns or questions. Very, very quick response. Any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven forty-three dash seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank B. Pocato to execute a revised agreement with ALDOT for the heat trip project concerning intersection improvements on South Shades Crest Road and Ridge Drive and Shades Run Circle.
President, I move for approval of Resolution fifty-seven forty-three seventeen.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? This was a project that has been still for quite some time because of running across some undetermined prior utilities. Seeing and hearing no questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Item eleven is going to be a public hearing for the abatement of public nuisance due to weeds and/or grass. Mr. Mack, you have a presentation, and then we'll ask for public comment.
Yes, sir. Tonight is the second hearing for twenty-two thirty-three Townheim Drive. This will be the voting on abatements. They've had all the vendor notifications. The house is vacant. According to the neighbors, owners have moved out, and it's, you know, the front yard has got the weeds over twelve inches. Backyard is badly overgrown, so it does need to be taken care of.
Any, anything that anyone from the public has to say about either of these properties? Anything from the council? Comments or questions?
Yes, sir. All right. Is it foreclosure, do you know, or is it just a abandoned house?
Most likely it's going to be in foreclosure, but so far, no bank has stepped forward on this. Tax records still show the original owner is the, you know, I mean, still showing him as the owner, I guess. Most likely it will be in foreclosure.
Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? This concludes the public hearing portion. Mr. Corley, resolution fifty-seven forty-four seventeen.
This resolution declares the weeds and/or grass on the property located at twenty-two thirty-three Townheim Drive as public nuisance and orders the abatement of such weeds and/or grasses provided intersections eleven dash sixty-seven dash sixty through eleven dash sixty-seven dash sixty-seven of the code of Alabama. The abundance of overgrown grass and/or weeds on the subject property is injurious to the general public. Now, the subject property was declared to be a public nuisance by the city council through resolution number fifty-six eighty-five dash seventeen passed by the council on October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. City council scheduled a public hearing for Monday, November twentieth, at six o'clock P.M. to consider evidence, objection, protest, voting, or removal of the weeds on the subject property, provided the required notice or such public hearing.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution fifty-four, I'm sorry, fifty-seven forty-four seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Once again, any from the audience? Mr. Mack, this covers only one address, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. The others...
Thursday, I believe, we had two that were spoken.
Yes, sir. The other one was taken care of by the owner over the weekend, and we're good to go.
Thank you, sir. Once again, anything from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven forty-five dash seventeen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the city of Hoover to participate in the two thousand eighteen severe weather preparedness tax holiday, exempting the payment of municipal sales and use taxes on certain covered items related to severe weather preparedness from twelve oh one A.M. on Friday, February twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, twelve o'clock midnight on Sunday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen.
President, I move for approval of Resolution fifty-seven forty-five seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Lopez, we're going to make sure that this appears on the city website thirty days, three weeks out.
It'll be before that, absolutely.
All right, thank you, sir. Anything from the audience? Comments or questions from the audience? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Item thirteen, second reading of ordinance seventeen eight dash twenty-three fifty-four, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance rearranges alters and extends the city's corporate limits to include property owned by River Chase United Methodist Church, surrounded by nineteen fifty-three Old Montgomery Highway, as shown on the map attached to the...
Mr. President, I move for the ALDOT Senate Ordinance Number seventeen twenty-three fifty-four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Mr. Martin, how large is this property?
One quarter acre.
One quarter acre. This doesn't come under the one hundred and eighty table of... Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? Comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lydah?
Aye.
Dr. Littlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Item fourteen, public hearing to consider a petition submitted by Elizabeth Fawn, Executive Director of Freshwater Land Trust, for three hundred fifty-nine point two acres, located between Rossbridge Parkway and Shades Crest Road. This second reading is being continued until March fifth of next year. We've got to do some re-advertising. So, conversation will hold on that, unless you have something regarding the comments and questions section of the meeting. Item fifteen is going to be the setting of public hearings. Will you make a motion on that, sir? Well, you know, that would probably be very appropriate.
Mr. President, I move to continue the second reading of ordinance number seventeen twenty-three fifty-five until March fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? From the audience? Hearing and seeing none, assuming this does not require a roll call, Madam clerk, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, the ayes have it. Next, we're going to set public hearings from Monday, December eighteenth, at six o'clock, to consider the following requests coming forward, deposit recommendations from the November thirteenth P and Z meeting. First, we have U.S. Steel Corporation is requesting approval of the twelfth amendment to Trace Crossings Plan Unit Development, which includes removing approximately thirteen point oh three acres from the Trace Crossing PUD and adding it to the Broad Metro PUD plan. Broad Metro LLC is the property owner, and the property is currently zoned Trace Crossings PUD, P.C., Parkland, V.I., planned light industrial. This will be the first reading of the ordinance, Mr. Corley.
Ordinance Number seventeen dash twenty-three fifty-six, and then the Trace Crossing Plan Unit Development to release approximately thirteen point oh three acres from this PUD for purposes of including it as part of the property in the Broad Metro PUD plan.
As it has been policy since the beginning of this quadrantium, we've asked applicants to make presentations at the first reading to give both the council and citizens opportunity between the first and second reading to be able to go home, do their own due diligence. due diligence, and come back with any questions. So, if there's a presentation to be made.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you, uh, and thank you, councilman. My name is Murphy MacMillan. I'm here on behalf of applicants, U.S. Steel, with respect to, uh, removing, uh, the Twelfth Amendment to the Trace Crossings Plan Unit Development, and, uh, I'm representing also Broad Metro with respect to zoning the property into, uh, the Stadium Trace Village PUD. Uh, the, uh, Stadium Trace Village PUD is approximately a forty-three acre development that is at the intersection of one fifty and four fifty-nine. Currently, approximately thirteen of this forty-three acres is located in the Trace Crossings PUD. So, the idea is to remove the property that's currently in the Trace Crossings PUD into the Stadium Trace Village PUD. Uh, as you can see, uh, on, this is a current zoning map of property, uh, and, uh, this reflects, uh, that a great deal of property is currently zoned, uh, located in the, uh, C two, uh, zoning district. And I think the next slide that we have is going to reflect, uh, the property as pre-zoned. Uh, you will also note here that we have a substantial village center in the middle of the development. Uh, that village center is to contain not less than twenty-five thousand, uh, square feet of property. The, uh, let's see, zoning plan calls for a maximum density, uh, fifteen thousand gross feet, uh, per acre, gross square feet per acre, which would be applied to the village center as a whole, and it would have a maximum impervious surface ratio for the entire development of approximately eighty-five percent. Uh, it will also, uh, have certain architectural and design standards that have been specifically established for the village center. Uh, those include, uh, orientation towards, uh, the street, uh, a general overall design concept that promotes walkability. Uh, the maximum size for a single tenant in the village center is a, uh, is fifteen thousand square feet. Also, specific building materials have been established for use and some restricted, uh, within the build, village center. Uh, we contemplate outside patios and dining areas. Uh, also, I think you will have on here, uh, a, well, we don't have it in this slide presentation, although I think Mark might have it, uh, substantial sidewalks. The, the PUD, uh, contemplates that sidewalks will be located on both sides of the street throughout the development. Um, we'll have, uh, on-street parking and some parking behind buildings within the village center. Uh, in addition, uh, the signage criteria will be, uh, in accordance, uh, with, uh, current C two sign regulations. Uh, the PUD Plan also establishes a project gateway sign for Stadium Trace Parkway and Highway one fifty entrance. Uh, and representatives, uh, I have with the, uh, Mark Gonzalez, Gonzalez Strength and Associates, he's been as a member of the project team, been intimately involved in this, as has Mike Hopper with Matt Development, Cody Long and Skipper Traffic Engineers, and Robin Gregory also at Gonzalez Strength, uh, are here this evening to address any, uh, questions that you have for any of them or for me.
Is this the end of the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, just so everyone knows, at the second reading, uh, we would not have this same presentation again. The only things that we will bill with other than the questions that are developed from tonight will be any changes to the PUD or anything that will be done with the PUD. So, uh, just to let everybody know. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Dr. Millbrook?
Um, can you go back and, and talk about your, um, building materials requirements? You said those have already been said. Uh, what aesthetically on the, on the exterior of the buildings, what materials will be used?
It's a, it's a broad range of materials, and you'll have to forgive me, the, uh, this is, this is actually the document, so I might have to do some digging in here to specifically answer your question. It's a broad range of materials is permitted, uh, and a, a lot of the reasons are this is because we see really interesting design concepts that are coming up. We've had an architect, he's kind of in it, providing some feedback on what retail tenants, uh, today typically like to see. So, we have tried to keep that broad. We've tried to pay particular attention to making sure that materials like eaters, uh, which is permitted, are installed in such a way that they don't, uh, that particular material, if you install it too close to the ground, it can degrade over time because it gets moisture in it. So, in the design criteria for there, I think we've put in provisions, uh, that will, that will try to preserve a, a, a high quality, uh, standard throughout the project.
Um, with this being the city's first village, per se, concept, being right off the interstate, uh, at the entrance of, of Trace Crossings, one of our premier, um, neighborhoods in the city, uh, I really want this village to, to speak to a high-end, well-designed, aesthetically pleasing development. Uh, with that said, now, I've researched an, an area around here that's known for the villages, Mount Brook. So, I researched a little bit of their requirements. Now, their village standards, now, we don't have to duplicate exactly what they do, but they allow four material uses on the outs, out exterior of their buildings, no more than four. Um, personally, I, I, I would like to see nothing but masonry used, stone or brick. Have to use ducko, I say we limit that to twenty percent. Uh, their, Mount Brook also has a transparency, uh, requirement. First floor, they have to be sixty to ninety percent transparent, so since it's shopping areas, you, you know, you won't be picture windows, see in. And, and if this is the current design, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not very impressed with this particular design. I'd, I'd like to see a higher, higher-end look to this village.
The, the design is not necessarily reflective of what's ultimately going to be there. This is, this is a beginning iteration's model. Uh, the developer, uh, will, uh, a combination of perhaps self-develop, perhaps, uh, perhaps, sell off to, uh, other developers various parcels. Uh, we have, we have a developer looking at the village center now, and again, this represents a, an, an early concept drawing.
Yeah, sure. So... Why, why are you there real quick? I don't think we got your address.
Oh, I apologize, sir. Again, Murphy MacMillan, four twenty, twentieth Street North, Birmingham, Alabama. I'm with the law firm of Baker Donaldson, here with Nicole Elmer, and this is Mike Hopper with Matt Development.
Yeah, Mike Hopper, uh, twenty-eight twenty-two, Prince Dome Lane, Hoover, Alabama. Um, the elevations that we currently have are kind of in design development, and we've worked with the staff, with the materials, and there will be a lot more color with awnings and outdoor dining with umbrellas and, uh, I would like to say the, the architect we've chosen, Crawford McWilliams Hatcher, has done about ten billions square feet of village type contracts. Uh, they did the summit, uh, they've done the avenues in Atlanta, uh, the gate, East Chase and Montgomery. So, we, we will rely on them for the, the design of the, of the village, and I think they've got a good resume and will do a, a good job for the city. And again, these are design development drawings that were really created to show tenants and, and give them an idea of what the village is going to take.
Um, can you speak on the lighting that's going to be used?
We'll have street lighting, we'll have sidewalk lighting.
Right, I understand street lighting. What, what type of lighting? Uh, but once again, you know, I'm, I'm pushing for a higher-end look here. Um, I know you can look at San Diego, they've got their gaslight lamp district. Um, you know, something soft, pleasing to the eye. I, I really think something like that would go a long way to elevating the, the look. Now, if gaslighting is too much, I understand they've got some lead, some lead.
LED lights.
Right, that, that replicate the flames.
Well, one of the things that we'll do is try to be compatible with the rest of, of the, the buildings within the development. Uh, the village is kind of the, the central feature, but there, there's going to be a lot of different tenants with a lot of different buildings, and so the architectural committee will, will make sure that that's all compatible. Um, and we'll, we will establish standards for those lights and standards for hardscaped items, uh, but all that, like I said, is kind of in design development as far as who we are.
Well, the, the architectural design committee, uh, you said you'll, they'll set the standards. Does that come back to the city for approval? Or once we approve this, are we, I mean, are we out of it? Uh, that's a question for the council or Matt.
Dr. Millbrook, the way that the PUD document is constructed, final architectural approval will lie over their committee. So, once it leaves your hands in terms of council approval, specific authority is granted to that committee for final approval of any project as it comes online.
So, if we have any specific requirements we want the PUD, it needs to be done before December eighteenth.
Yes, sir. Needs to be done before the final PUD is voted at this body.
Any other comments or questions?
Just a press, I have a, I have a traffic question. Your, your secondary ingress and egress that is on Emery Drive, could you speak a little bit about what, how that, that traffic is going to impact Stadium Trace? The, only the Emery, Emery Drive part, I'm not worried about the front, just the ingress, egress out of Emery Drive.
Absolutely. Uh, for the record, my name is Cody Long, and I'm representing Skipper Consulting. Our address is thirty-six forty-four Van Road, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two, three five two three five. We are the Traffic Engineering Consultants. I'm a, forgive me, I'm, I'm an engineer, I have to call for my hand. What we recommend is, uh, and specifically, uh, Emery Drive, there, there's two things. There's two things that we, um, we're, we're talking about when we talk about Emery Drive. First...
You're drawn for that drawing?
Uh, actually, yes. Here we go. It's a little bit easier there. Okay. Um, actually, I'm going to go back to that real quick. Big picture here. Um, the things that we were concerned about as the traffic engineer on process, on the project is, is traffic coming down Stadium Trace approaching Emery Drive from one fifty and then the approaches of Emery Drive and the side belt. So, moving back to this, this drawing here, this is from our report, and this documents the recommended roadway improvements that were the results of our traffic study. So, um, this traffic is, the traffic related to the development, whoop, wrong with, sorry about that. Traffic related to the development is going to be coming in and out of the side access. There is Emery Drive there on the bottom of the screen there, in the middle of that, that graphic. So, what we noted was, is that when you place the development traffic on, in this area right here on these roadways, it would increase the delay that motors would, would see at this intersection. So, uh, the way that we mitigate this delay is we recommended first to provide a left-turn lane out on the side access, a through lane and a right turn lane, and that's shown on the draw, on the drawing. The other recommendation that we made was to add a northbound left turn lane, so that's getting the left turning traffic out of the through lane to Stadium Trace. And Emery, Emery Drive, what we did, we recommended to actually widen the approaches of Emery Drive so that we provide a westbound through left turn lane and then a right turn lane. And that's based upon, that, that lane layout is based upon the traffic volume there. And then we recommend installing a traffic signal. And what that traffic signal will do is it will actually reduce the delay that we would have anticipated there if this would have stayed a side street stop. And so, that's what we recommended to, to mitigate the delay at this intersection. The other item to kind of help flow, traffic flow in this general area here is coming off of Highway one fifty, and I'm going to jump on you to the upper right-hand image there. As you leave one fifty, if you're traveling eastbound on one, one fifty, and you want to turn right onto Stadium Trace Parkway, today, you have a traffic signal, that's actually a signalized approach as part of the, the overall traffic signal. And what that does is, is that it gives you the right of way when there's no conflict movement, okay? The, uh, what we recommended is to actually pick up a lane in this area right here and bring it down and drop it at this intersection right here. And what that does is, is that takes it to where that's no longer a signalized movement, but a free-flow movement. So, when we're traveling off one fifty, we're going to free-flow down here, that's going to give you, if you're going on south onto Stadium Trace, it's going to give you the opportunity to, to weave without having to have that traffic signal there. So, that should also make that movement efficient. And one of the questions that we received previously was that how does that weave? And, and that's what we define that is, just kind of background there, that how does the, the traffic work? We call that a weave. If you're trying to turn right and go further down, you're going to change lanes. And so, what that actually does is, is that we have tested this. We modeled it, we have tested it. We feel that the distance between these two points is long enough where you can say we make that movement efficient. So, did I, any?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I just know it's going to be one of the things that we're going to hear about between now and then, and it's good to understand more specifically how this is going to work on busy roadway.
Yes, sir. We, we put a lot of, of time into testing to verify that, that area right there, both the intersection and the, the area leading up to the intersection.
There you go. Any more comments or questions from the council?
Just one quick question. Uh, you don't have to go in detail, but it's something I want to know, probably you'll submit to later on. You talked, you talked about that right turn lane off one fifty, I'm going to call that southbound, but if you're coming from the, uh, on the streetway, I think I asked this question before, you make a left on the Stadium Trace, you're going to have to bear over several different lanes to, to get to the new development of the new area. If you're saying there's a through lane through there from, from right turn lanes, how are you going to make up the difference when they make a left and try to narrow over, create like a weaving pattern? And, uh, was a study done on that to see how that's going to work out?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, we, uh, we did...
Okay, you can give that to me later on.
Okay.
If you don't mind, so I'm going to take up time.
You do.
Anything else from the council? Um, I'm going to ask that the public know their comments to the second reading. Uh, if you need to, obviously you can also contact us. Uh, mostly you already know how to contact us very well. Um, I'm sure the mayor would be mine, his vice would be mine either. Um, but if you have any particular questions that you'd like to have addressed prior to the next, uh, second reading, then, uh, make sure you get in touch with us. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, if you would, a moment of time if you have to, if you can, what is your name? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Here?
Not really.
A moment of your time at the end of the...
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Uh, item B is Broad Metro LLC is requesting approximately forty-three point two eight acres located at the intersection of Highway one fifty and four fifty-nine, currently zoned C two, P C, V I. Be zoned as the Stadium Trace Village PUD. Property is owned, uh, property owner is Broad Metro LLC. Mr. Corley, the first reading, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two fifty-seven.
Yes, sir. This ordinance zones the property owned by Broad Metro LLC, consisting of forty-three point two eight acres located at the intersection of Alabama Highway one fifty and I four fifty-nine. It's currently zoned... It's currently zoned C-two, P C, and V I, as the Stadium Trace Village P U D. The zoning is made according to the terms set forth in the Stadium Trace Village Plan Unit Development zoning application and development plan attached to this ordinance is Exhibit A. This zoning was recommended for approval by the Hoover Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there going to be a presentation for this?
Yeah, it, it's, it's really the exact same, Mr. President, it's all part and parcel of the, of the same project.
Any comments or questions from the council? All right, we will see you again on the eighteenth, not the fourth. Um, Mr. Lyatt?
Sir.
Do I have to pay any bills?
I wanna pay a few bills. In fact, I wanna pay all of them. Help me stack, and I move for approval, please.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Uh, comments and questions, uh, anything from the council? I understand Hoover's gonna be playing at, uh, Thompson, as that will be, gotta be a good name for it.
Friday.
Vengeful, vengeance, revengeful, revengeful, a revengeful effort. Um, once again, I want to remind everybody about the next board session being at four o'clock, so we don't disrupt the sound.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Do we have, uh, any different hours to City Hall this week?
Uh, I understand City Hall's gonna be pretty well locked up Thursday and Friday, unless anybody just wants to come and work with the garbage service. Garbage service will be delayed by one day, and so, Thursday to Friday, Friday and Saturday. Any comments or questions from the council? Chief, you got anything? Chief Bennett, you got anything? No?
Yes, sir.
Keep begging, we might be able to tell a pop.
Yeah, but I know Mr. Murphy can cook something, little hot dogs, and maybe some chicken and cheese for Brianna's reception next door. The mayor has, uh, I, I don't think he can make a motion, but, uh...
Motion for adjournment.
Just gonna make sure, one more time, I know Arnold can't say anything, does he got a chance? Yeah, but I didn't recognize him. I know, he can't talk. Uh, so, nobody gonna say it, amazing. Uh, all in favor, stand up.